In favor?
I.
I.
Alright.
I move to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open reading requirements under Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one dot one. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard discussed or considered in the meeting by the planning commission. Second.
Second.
Okay.
We we need our little call.
Okay, you'll call the please.
Molly?
Yes.
Uh, hi. Uh, Dan?
Yes. Uh.
And Jim?
Uh, I.
Uh, motion passes. All members.
Thank you. I already have this down.
I would like to make a motion to um move forward with Elizabeth Knott as our um proposed new planning commissioner and um we would like to have the town council vote on this at their next regular session. Um, we think that Liz has a proven track record of town involvement and and uh she's very civic minded. She's also a renter and we think that it's important to have that perspective on our our commission. And she seems uh like the best, the best candidate for the position at this time.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Motion passes recommendation made to town council. Okay, um, old business, Lincoln Lewis. You still with us?
Yes, still here.
Alright, thanks for your patience.
Sure, Javier, could you please uh enable a screen share for me? Thanks so much.
I'm gonna make you co-host.
Okay. Well, I have a a short presentation tonight, so I think we can get out of here by nine P M. That might be good news.
Wonderful, wonderful.
You should be able to screen share related to the the show of yours.
Okay, it's working now. Thank you. Okay. So Javier and I are about to start on the uh the writing process uh next week, so this is the week that I'm finishing my la- last coursework of the semester, so I I just need a little bit more time to focus here on campus. But um I'd like to uh give you a brief overview on the youth engagement activities. Uh, some uh questions we've gotten regarding the data uh or feedback from uh one of the town councillors um that maybe we could answer some of the questions for. And I'd just like to give you an update on the schedule of the work. So youth engagement activities, uh you can see my daughter here. Um, she was banging the ga- gavel for Lisa one day, but um you know, I reached out to Scottsville Elementary and uh we have a meeting with Principal Wells set up for Thursday, December seventh, four P M. At Town Hall. And um she prefers to stay at the school when when the kids are there, so she'll come visit Town Hall after the faculty meeting that day. And the school, the school kids are gone. Uh, but basically, we're targeting to have this youth engagement uh event uh sometime in mid-December if we can squeeze it in with with her schedule, and I know she might have to get some permission forms from parents and all kinds of things. But uh she is talking with her her teachers about who might be interested to bring their class. And if we can't achieve uh mid-December, then uh we might have to focus on early January. Uh, today I reached out to uh Jalani, the Boys and Girls Club Director at the James River Club, and uh maybe we could also schedule something similar uh with them. I think they might have more more availability during the day uh when school's out of session perhaps. Here are some possible activities. Um, to Principal Wells, I offered that we could give them a tour of Town Hall. Then the kids could sit at the dais. And staff uh such as Javier and I could present to them, so we turn the tables. Uh, we explain, you know, what happens in the town council chambers. What's a comprehensive plan? How long does it look in the future? Some of these kids might only be five to ten years old, depending on the age level that the principal recommends, but that the comp plan is looking maybe double their lifespan, so we 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 might need to explain that in a certain way. And what are we really planning here for? Uh, I think it might be a good exercise also to use our stickers, uh especially regarding walkability. They might not be able to really talk about where they live, th- that exercise, so maybe we, it's best to focus on walkability. Where do they like to walk to, what areas are difficult, and what what are areas that they want to walk to, but they can't right now? And then we can have a some sort of uh fun voting exercise and banging of the gavel. Uh, these are just some ideas, and of course, we need to to present to it at the youth level, but um as Mr. Gritzko uh, you know, suggested a couple meetings ago, that we would be really great to engage the kids and include them and their their feedback in the comp plans somehow. So we're working towards that. Um, I can move on now, but any any thoughts or feedback regarding the youth engagement? I know Ms. Strassner, you're excited to to potentially participate if you're able.
Yeah, uh, yeah, if you if you need me to do that, I can be here.
Okay, we'll see um with Principal Wells what her schedule is for the kids and then we can calendars.
If you need to send it, I'm glad to be there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, and the Boys and Girls Club is open during the week before the, so uh, the week before Christmas when the schools are out, so they're the kids are gonna be down at the club that whole week during the day. So that might be a great week to get participation from them.
Sure, definitely.
Otherwise, they're at school.
Yep. And we'll we'll try to talk to Principal Wells and Jalani about um how we can get a diverse uh cross-section of the community. We don't want to have the same kids come for Scottsville Elementary and then Boys and Girls Club. Um, but do you have any insights, Ms. Strassner, on how we could position that to get a broad cross-section?
Um. Well, just the Boys and Girls Club, you're getting all three counties, so there's a lot of kids from Buckingham that come in, so I think um, I think you could just ask, you know, whoever signs up through the elementary school doesn't also sign up through the Boys and Girls Club. Um. Yeah, and you could even provide the names to, you know, if it's okay with with um Ms. Wells to have Jalani, you know, just give the list of names to Jalani to cross-check to make sure that they're not double, double booking.
Well, and I feel like it's a voluntary activity when the Boys and Girls Club does this, so maybe the kids will opt in or opt out based upon their interest, so if they already did it, maybe they don't want to do it again, or if they already did it and they thought it was cool, maybe they do want to do it again, so I mean, I think that could happen organically and wouldn't worry too much about it.
Okay, and and one other question I have about the Boys and Girls Club, does it have uh middle school age kids also?
Yes, all the way up through high school, actually.
Yes, you may end up seeing a really different group of kids with all those age ranges and different counties and stuff.
Okay. Great. Uh, this is gonna be really exciting. Uh, we'll try to get Mayor there also, and uh anyone else that's um interested, of course. Any other thoughts from a town council standpoint? Um, Mr. Gritzko, you might want to to mention about, we're trying to get this idea of civicness out to the kids also.
Yeah, I I think you got it covered. I like what you did, Lincoln, and trying to bring them in both to get their thoughts and also to uh make them feel in if a part of the process. I think it's, I think it's good both ways.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for the information.
Maybe they can do an essay contest and we can give them like a little prize.
Writing about the town?
Yeah, like writing about, I don't know, a law that they'd like to see or
Like, like
I don't know.
Like, in fact, I'll tell you all a very cute story that, Lincoln, you might find this as a thought, so Nancy, at at times will pass through our yard on her route, and a couple of years ago, when she was still mayor, and she was talking to my granddaughter Georgia, who I was her chauffeur today, who's seven. Anyways, I was explaining to Georgia that Nancy's the mayor, and if she needed anything, she could ask Nancy for help. And so when Nancy left, she said, that she calls me Papa G, she says, Papa G, why would I ask Nancy, Miss Nancy, a question? Wouldn't I just ask my mom and dad? Like. I'm like, okay, it was just really funny. I was trying to explain to her, you know, what the mayor does. And she's like, but can I just ask mom?
Right.
So, Lincoln, I I would say it is interesting to show, I think, with a young one, the ability that even though it doesn't seem like it, that what the grown-ups do, what the grown-ups really are doing is really for them. I mean, in other words, to show that that this, that that this who they are, what they are matters, and that what we're trying to do is actually with them in mind. That's kind of the point of of trying to make sure they understand that. We, I think, as a town, sometimes forget that, so we need to remember that.
Great, okay. Thank you. So uh I received an email from a Commissioner, sorry, C- Counselor Heisen, uh should have put Counselor there on the slide, but he was really um wanting to suggest that the comp plan, try to get some data on these metrics listed here. Number of residential houses, number of apartments, number of businesses, number of vacant houses, number of empty storefronts, and number of short-term lodgings. And I think the short answer is we don't have this data.
Wasn't there, who was doing that? It was Nancy. Wasn't she gathering all of this information?
Yeah. Nancy had had mentioned that she wanted to do it for houses and this like basically residences. And businesses should be easy because, I mean, it's very, they should be paying the tax, the license.
Right.
This is uh, Lincoln. Uh, you know, I can just total our business licenses and use that. And then uh if you reach out to Nancy and ask about, because I also heard that she's
Yeah.
collecting houses.
Yeah.
Uh.
But we've been asking for this information for years as a a commission. And we still don't have it.
Uh, I mean, I think it's, it just takes some work, but you can get it from the G I S. Actually, Billy, what's her name? Um, Kelly Cruz also put something like this together when she was having the conversation about the tire factory and the age of the properties.
Right, she did.
It's, we, it'll take some work, but you know what? I volunteered to take this on. I'll work on it. I'll get input, I'll come back, give you my methods and talk about it and
That'd be great, thanks, thanks so much.
Okay.
Now, Ms. Morris went through the G I S for all of Fluvana County, uh that side of town, to understand how many uh lots there are.
Oh, that's another issue, oh boy.
So she was interested um in that, in terms of town revenue and so on and so forth. Um, but she might have part of the data already for that side of town at least. Um, so on on this uh stream of thought, um, this is a good opportunity to talk about um some text in the comp plan. The current language mentions that Scottsville has a population of about six hundred persons. So I would suggest that we're, we put in the census uh number from twenty twenty, that's uh five hundred and twenty-four. Um, and that's based on, you know, the U.S. Government figure. Um, but then there's also the current goal for the the town. Um, that was to perhaps have around a thousand people by twenty forty. Um, and that, that is kind of a ambiguous number, uh some people have said. Um, and I I have heard the planning commissioners also talk about maybe focusing on approximate number of households. We've talked about this at various engagement events rather than a specific population number. Uh, so wanted to get your thoughts on on that in terms of what should we put as a target, if we need to put a target?
Yeah, I know that we have a handle on how to affect that change. I mean, I think we're having some growth. Uh. I think they've talked about growing the town.
Yeah.
Nothing's really started yet. I don't know what's going to happen and what's not going to happen.
You mean as far as the construction goes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, I, one thing I can tell you is the, what'd you call it?
Upper bird?
No, over, yeah, upper bird, that's fully happened. I mean, there, anything I
But I mean, you know, they're like the May Creek, you know, all of that has been set on for twenty
Yeah, how would it happen, and it hasn't happened?
No, what I'm, I'm not actually saying, I'm saying, as I communicate with them, they're fully moving forward with like, like the stuff, like there's they they but the one thing I'd say, going back to the number though, that we that was kind of, it was, it was both a disputed number when we had the issues of actual development that we threw out there, but to come up with what we recommend is, I think it's a worthy process, um, Lincoln, but in in other words, we would have to eh eh to either come up with a compilation of what opinions people have, in other words, from people we've talked to in the past or from our own. So it it is, I think it is a worthy number, but it, but that final number is tricky though, you know, how we, how you create this.
I feel like just based on this process that we've already been going through, it seems like most people are for some sort of moderate growth.
Okay.
Um, but six hundred to like, I I think we have a thousand in the comp plan by a certain
Twenty forty.
Twenty forty. Um. I mean, I guess that's sixteen years from now. Um, and that's almost doubling the size of the town. It doesn't seem like moderate growth. Maybe that's too much.
That figure has been there forever.
Yeah, right.
I don't think you quantify that.
Right, but I'm saying like at this point, like that doesn't seem like moderate growth.
If we go to the point where we drop it to nine ninety-five.
I mean, I only say like, we want to increase the the percentage, you know, or, you know. Do we have to have a number? Couldn't we just say like maybe by twenty percent or twenty-five percent, or we we just want to increase the housing stock so that there's you know, newer homes in the town that, you know, since the nineteen fifties when your neighborhood was built?
Well, here's
I don't know.
Here's what I would say, the, just to follow that up. I think up until about, until this process, we just went through it. It was an ethereal exercise based off of projected growth in the county that we projected onto the town, and thirty years ago, we came up with a number, but growth Scottsville is gonna end in the future is real, like we're gonna have growth that's happening. It's a question of what's an accurate way to assess, okay, let's just say those thirty-six houses happen in the next five years. Okay, that's a hundred, that's a hundred more people over there, and just to say that's a that's, as a guess, of, let's just say they, that's a hundred people there. Um, if you flip it on to east, which is totally unclear, that could maybe hard to project. Here, I think it's easy to project.
Right, but that seems like, I mean, just adding that neighborhood alone seems like we've hit the goal of moderate growth.
It certainly in the next three to five years.
Population, yeah.
Well, and so, and so just to use that, if you use that, you'd say, okay, maybe we want it to be seven. I'm I'm just throwing your argument up forward, okay, if you want it to be eight fifty years, or nine fifty, or, so somehow we have to come up with a number that is that, I mean, that ultimate number is based off of theory factors, but it does take them into consideration however we do it.
It's a goal. I just don't see how you can measure your goal against something that's not in our control.
That's the, that's the sticking point, exactly. We don't have control over it. We do have control over whether we're increasing the housing stock in town. We we do, I mean, we can vote on these new things.
Yeah, but we voted on, I mean, they voted on the May Creek, and that hasn't been built, so that's where our control.
Sure, but like, right, I mean, obviously, but like, we still have, but that's the point. Well, I mean, but that's, that's the point, where we, we can I mean, obviously, that we we're not the construction company, and we can't, you know, say, yes, we're gonna go out, we're gonna build these homes now, but we can enable the growth. Or, you know, we can, we can make the town more renter-friendly, or we can, you know, we can do that through the zoning. And that's as far as the control that we have.
Yeah, but I think just mainly a goal or you know, a thousand people populating this town is completely ambiguous, like there's no way we can know.
Right, but what's not ambiguous is the things that we can do to increase, like, that's what I'm saying, like, maybe we don't have to have a number. Maybe we can just say
That's what I'm saying, is I don't think we should put a number in there.
Right, and I would I would agree with that.
Okay.
But we could say something to the effect of, we want to see moderate growth, and the way that we are going to do our part to enable that is by updating our zoning ordinances and you know, trying to attract, you know, renters or buyers or whatever, you know, that, like, we can only do within our purview, but
One of the things I will say that, okay, I've been, having been on the council thirteen years, one of the things that's changed in the last three years, we now have a developer who has an active plan. Like, that that wasn't, I think, we've worded um we've worded as a town prior to that, it didn't go back fifteen, twenty years, various other things, so we now have an active developer, and they have one development that's fully what could to the, there, we have another area that could be dramatically different from a lot of houses to by right houses, and from a developer's standpoint, we had somebody before, it was just sitting on the property. So this is, I I I think we as a council, we as the uh planning commissioners need to realize, stuff is about to happen, whether we do something or not, and so what this gives us a chance to do is to try to direct that it's gonna happen. And so the question is, like, when I say it's gonna happen, I mean, there's now somebody who has a heck of a lot of money and resources
Right.
who have access to this land that didn't happen before, and they're not gonna sit on it very long in that process, so I'm, when I say it's very long, it could be five years, ten years, whatever. So we have this opportunity to drive what we think, and and the way we do that isn't just a number, it's the policies that we recommend
Right.
that we say we want two hundred new units or three new sites or whatever it is.
Yeah.
So, I feel good with that. I just feel like coming up with an arbitrary number just seems counterproductive.
Yeah.
Or just not.
I think this is very good guidance. Thank you so much. Um, I've been writing down the key
Sorry, Lincoln.
Sorry, Lincoln.
No, this is really good. I I think uh you, terminology such as enable um and uh the policy choices, and um I would agree that putting a number there can have some consequences, but um I think it's how I can explain it uh that what in moderate growth really means, because if the land in the northeast near Paulette Town, if that develops as it is by right, that already is considered moderate growth.
Right.
But it could, it could enable the town to do so much more if if more um density, for instance, was possible there. Uh. Through different trade-offs. Um. But, okay, let me think about this a little bit more. It's a little bit late at night. My my brain is fizzling out. But um thi- this has been really helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And um, yeah, I'll look forward to miss uh Cultubiano, thanks for volunteering on the numbers. That'll be really helpful.
Thank you, Lincoln.
Um, I'll just keep rolling here on the the schedule. Okay, so we're here on fourth of December. Uh, we're gonna hopefully focus on youth engagement, maybe the week of the eleventh. And uh maybe the week of the eighteenth for Boys and Girls Club. We'll try to get that done, and then we'll have that that draft document ready and and circulated here at the end of the year. Uh, one thing to mention is uh I'm meeting Nancy on the eleventh of December still to uh talk about the basic comp plan information uh in the podcast. And um Javier is gonna work a little bit more on the maps, because we need to have a little bit better understanding about the the boundary of the town, especially on the Fluvana side, so we can update the the land use plan, the future land use plan. Um, then there was a question earlier tonight about uh the January Planning Commission meeting. I believe we talked about third of January, since uh the staff uh will will get off uh first and second. Uh, so third of January works fine for me. Uh, then the town council work session is, of course, on the the eighth, I believe. And then again, on the fifteenth is the town council meeting. So we talked about potentially having a planning commission public hearing sometime in January, maybe a special meeting later in the month, or we just uh schedule it directly for the first uh Monday of February.
Well, we talked about possibly having this special meeting on January third.
Yeah, um, I would suggest, you know, i- it's a question of, like this population discussion we just had. Um, and you know, would the planning commissioners be comfortable with putting out a document without having some of it, some sort of those types of questions? Yeah. Uh, not having the time to come together as a group. It might, we might want to have a little bit more time to to discuss more questions like that, the population question and other other items. That'd be my recommendation, yeah.
Well, I think concrete things like that, we could move to email. Like, that, I mean, I think that's an example of something that could be in an email, but things that really need more discussion, maybe have a meeting, but I mean, that's what the public hearing is for too, to get input there, but if you feel like we need time to sit with it and review it and talk about it first before the public hearing, we could do that too. I'm just, I want to try to be expedient.
Yeah, I I understand. Um, there was also this um great suggestion you had uh Ms. Cultubiano about having this joint work session with the town council. So it's just the sequencing of that, um, whether uh the planning commissioners would like to to have the the public meeting first, um, public hearing first, or would would you like to have this joint session with the town council first? That that's another thing to consider.
You know, honestly, this might even be the sort of thing that would be a good um joint public hearing. I mean, do we need to have two public hearings on the comp plan? No, I don't think it's gonna be anything that's super, I don't know. It doesn't seem to be exciting, much attention, I'm sorry.
I think we have the full requirements to do both.
We've done, we've done a joint, didn't we do a joint public hearing in the past?
Sorry, I thought you meant for the Congress to plan the public hearing, plan, planning commission has to have one, tab accounts has to have.
We have to have two separate public hearings because it's comp plan? No.
No, I could announce both both bodies have had a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if they happen to be on the same day during your joint session, that's a different conversation. I think that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm suggesting might be possible.
Sorry.
But did we need a work session first? Joint work session.
Um, one one question I do have, maybe Javier the, that's suited to to answer this is, for a public hearing of this sort, um would the draft document be circulated, or would this just be an open comment period based on no public document?
I believe we would tr- circulate the draft.
I think we would have to circulate the draft before the public hearing. So, so then the answer may be no, let's sit with it together and talk about it together, and then make sure we have a good draft to release to the public for a hearing.
I think that that that'd be most worthwhile, and I, but I really like the idea of having a joint public hearing, um, because I agree that you know, we could save uh energy and time having one meeting rather than two public hearings. Yeah, I think that's a great idea, if if possible.
No, double check all that for you, Lincoln.
Super. Super.
So are we having a planning commission meeting on January third?
I would propose, yes, uh, so we can, uh, no matter what, discuss any. Uh. Uh, low hanging fruit or loose ends that, that come up and, uh, potentially we'll also be able to, to wrap in the fifth, uh. Commissioner, the new commissioner into the meeting. I think that might be really fruitful too.
So if you get, go back to December, please.
True.
So if you get us the draft by the twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Is it realistic for us to review it and come in prepared to discuss it on Wednesday the third? That's a week. Over a holiday, right, and there's New Year's.
And there's the day after New Year's and, and it's so much recovery.
Yes. Well, um, of course, you know, I wouldn't ex- expect anyone to, to read that much over the holidays, um. But we again could have a very focused discussion and, um, have a very good picture of. When that public hearing could be, and we make a recommendation to town council. And then town council would vote on the fifteenth, let's have that public hearing, that joint public hearing on, let's say. The, the twenty-ninth, that's the fifth Monday of the, the year, there won't be any other public meetings that day. Um, that could be potentially that, that joint meeting, that joint, uh, public hearing. Does that, does that pencil out Javier, that the fifth Monday of the, of the year won't have any other meetings, right?
We won't.
Yeah. That, that would just be a possibility, I would. I would think might, might be, uh, worthwhile considering, or we. Another option would be inviting, uh, town council to the first, um, Monday. Uh, planning commission meeting, uh, in February.
That's a good option too, Lincoln.
So, um, what my recommendation would be, let us get this draft out to you before the end of the year. And then that planning commission meeting, even though you might not have, uh, enough time to, to read every single word. Uh, you can still have a, a, a pretty good picture of how we can move forward with the schedule. Uh, just to di- today, I've, I've sent around, uh, more texts, uh, for instance, on. Updates to the Canal Basin Square. I'm working on, uh, the Van Cleve Nature Area. Text right now, tonight during the meeting, um, so chipping away at, at the, at the document. I've also sent, uh, for instance, Stevie and Ms. Gill, uh, an email requesting any feedback on Vic- uh, Victory Hall text. Asking for some specific question on whether fundraising committee is still active, so these, these things that. That seem to make the document a little bit stale, so on and so forth. Um, they haven't replied, so I just move forward with that text. We assume it's okay. Okay, any, any, uh, guidance on the schedule that you can offer?
Thoughts on the third?
Oh.
Let's do that. I can even move, okay, January third.
Great.
Stand for you guys, okay with that?
Yes, I'll be back.
Yeah.
I'll be refreshed.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Third at seven.
Yeah, I like the idea of doing the third and then the twenty-ninth for a joint meeting. Thank you, Lincoln. Good luck to your school project.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, good night.
Well.
Bye.
If, if the chairman there is there, can I give a little, I forgot to give a report, uh, at the beginning. Um, if you notice, you have orange binders in front of you.
Yeah.
Yes, so inside those binders are, you guys are lucky prizes to have a notebook in there, um. That Melanie put it together, I think we're gonna start sharing that out of all the conditions, um, so you can catalog some information. Um, into the new year, uh, I think that will help also with some of our. Uh, between our records that we keep with minutes and also town council, but I want you to have that ability. Uh, so that I could, so that we could communicate a little bit better. How do I put this? I mean, it's getting a little bit late.
Yeah, I didn't even understand it, but. It's, yeah, I'm not sure that I understand it, so what? Do we take this home or we give it back to you? And you fill it up in the slate?
No, uh, yeah, so take it home, fill it up, so you have your material.
Cause we have a binder you gave us, you gave us a folder in the past.
Yes, when I didn't worry, picture back.
Yeah.
That's also been, if you guys knew that at all.
Okay, so the purpose of the notebook is for us to take notes during meetings and then give those notes to you all to come.
No, just for yourself.
Oh, okay.
And, and it kind of recently changed, um, different towns and how they do things and. Robert's rules, the state's rules. The minutes aren't supposed to be a transcript of the meeting. Your minutes are just basically your what, where, how it went down, that's it. Who said it? You know, we're sitting here saying, okay, well, this, you know. Lincoln went through this presentation and, you know, writing everything down, wrote for. It's just basically a timeline. It's basically all, all your minutes are supposed to be. And I know.
I just thought it was different.
Yeah, and it's, it's not. It's not a transcript, that's why we're done on it, where you can go back and you can listen to me and think what you need out of it.
The context, the background, the discussion, yeah. Gotcha. All right. Well, I like this because I make my notes all of the agenda, but then I put the agenda away and then.
Yeah.
Very awesome. So this I can bring to each meeting and any important things I need to carry over, I can have here. So I can see my.
Fill that up in one meeting.
Well, so.
You're being like, I write too big. We, we have plenty.
Okay, well, I don't know what happens to the first page. I'm really worried about that.
Mine's, mine's intact.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'll have to check this out.
Okay.
And if you need bigger one, I have eight and tons of no juice. Why not some water damage?
Place a car in thirty days.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, and also one more thing, please. I, I do wanna thank you, Javier, for putting this together. Because just having some continuity and consistency in how we screen people and the questions we're asking, and this is. Basics and demographics, but it's nice, this is really important too, to have on those.
Yeah.
In addition to the meeting.
Sometimes you feel like you're kind of building a plan as it's flying here, uh, so I'm glad that you noticed that I was making that effort, cause I, I know it helps you guys out and. Maybe we keep building on that and.
Smart.
Build some good processes that make it easier for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask just really quick, uh, when is the next mayoral election?
Two years.
Two years from now?
Well, it's less than two years, it's less than two years.
Next year.
Next year, yeah.
Cause this year, I'm like, that was special.
Twenty twenty-four, correct.
And it's in November.
Which.
That's worse than a year. Yeah, did you say two years from now or two, is it a two-year term?
It was, it's a four-year term. And.
Oh, so I think twenty twenty was the election year.
Twenty twenty was the election year, we had that switch up, where we switched dates, cause you guys, it used to be a spring election.
Right.
Twenty twenty-four, you have an election.
Okay.
This is the crowded election.
And then I think, I think it's twenty-four.
Okay.
Next year, I think it is twenty-four.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
That's why these guys are here. And information, special events.
Where, what they, when they changed, when we should, we used, everything was two years.
Mm-hmm.
And then things changed a couple of years ago to split. Now we have a council that's four, four years and the mayor is four years, and it's confused.
Can you all run again, or is it just a one term?
No, they could run again.
Okay.
We don't have any term limits in our charter.
Okay. Another thing, when you do pass the information on to town council about, um, the planning commission vacancy. Can you please let them know what the term is when that position, so that we can be clear on that?
Go into detail about that.
Okay. Thank you. And make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Seven.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
All right, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Javier, last night, I.